When we make a loan at West Tennessee Bank, we're helping to build a stronger community, and so can you. By choosing West Tennessee Bank, you keep your money right here at home where local people benefit most. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Lender Member FDIC.
All right, we will proceed with the meeting then. The next by the House approved amendment to November meeting. Your committee goes to mail. Right. Most of the members have approved to the Minnesota November meeting. Any questions or discussion? If not, on the floor say aye.
Aye.
Close down. Motion Security get an amendment.
One amendment. We have one vote to amend. This is for capital projects, again, for capital outlay. From the first bid that we had for the new additions to the high school, we had fire marshal report came in after those bids were submitted. That fire marshal report caused us to decide to reject all bids. We rebid it, and in the process of having to rebid, the bids came in about 30, or 350,000 higher, so we added 365,000 to our capital outlay from budget, or from our fund out.
Most of the members saying we approve to the amendment for schools. Any questions on that?
Is that just me? Just our votes? Yes, sir. We had, they had originally told us it was going to be coded difference and be treated separately, which would not require sprinkling in the new additions. But then, after the bids were submitted, the fire marshal changed his mind and coded it where we could include it with the building. It required us to have it sprinkled and do those costs and sidewalks all around, extra exterior doors. Those added expenses averaged about 350,000 more to be made. We are making that decision Thursday night.
I do have watched your meeting. So y'all have three bids that y'all have already made before.
We've had, we've had one meeting where we've done some discovery, some investigation. At this meeting Thursday night, then we'll make a decision.
And what else? If not, on the floor say aye.
Aye.
Close down. Motion Security get an amendment.
Okay. We have one vote to amend. This is for capital projects, again, for capital outlay. From the first bid that we had for the new additions to the high school, we had fire marshal report came in after those bids were submitted. That fire marshal report caused us to decide to reject all bids. We rebid it, and in the process of having to rebid, the bids came in about 30, or 350,000 higher, so we added 365,000 to our capital outlay from budget, or from our fund out.
Most of the members saying we approve to the amendment for schools. Any questions on that?
Is that just me? Is this our vote? Yes, sir. We had, they had originally told us it was going to be coded difference and be treated separately, which would not require sprinkling in the new additions. But then, after the bids were submitted, the fire marshal changed his mind and coded it where we could include it with the building. It required us to have it sprinkled and do those costs and sidewalks all around, extra exterior doors. Those added expenses averaged about 350,000 more to be made. We are making that decision Thursday night.
I do have watched your meeting. So y'all have three bids that y'all have already made before.
We've had, we've had one meeting where we've done some discovery, some investigation. At this meeting Thursday night, then we'll make a decision.
And what else? If not, on the floor say aye.
Aye.
Close down. Motion Security get an amendment.
Highway.
I got a question. Any questions? Most of the highway budgets have approved as presented, sir.
Most of the members saying we approve the report of the highway department is presented. Any questions? If not, on the floor say aye.
Aye.
Close down. Motion Security get an amendment.
We have one highway. We have two.
What's I got a question for this part of it?
We, uh, we put a shop, we own a lot of, around the next time.
We can bring it back.
Oh, sorry. I brought up that.
Right.
Yes, sir. This is probably a private area, where you're going to run this. I want to run this. You're referring to President Davis. Pretty good to get off that block lane. This is a subdivision out there. Here at the empty site. I'll say that's all I give y'all. If y'all didn't want to talk and run this, I need some.
Has this already been approved yet?
The road is. But I did the road this thirty years.
Okay. It hasn't changed yet?
No.
Except for this one.
Except for this.
Go on. Any good? One, two.
I don't want to add to it.
Yeah.
We don't really need one.
Did that, that was what you got.
Good one now, too. All right. Please do.
Yes, sir.
The next is trustee report.
Good evening. Hope everyone's doing well. The US state did reports out of style with all the weather. We still bear down on that. Any questions, comments?
Most of the members saying we approve to the trustees report is presented. Any questions? If not, on the floor say aye.
Aye.
Close down. Motion Security.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. County General. Would you have some amendments about county?
Please.
Let's get recording. Come back in.
Did everyone get a copy of the county general and solid waste reports? Uh, we're about 48.74% in county general, 50% in the solid waste. It's 47.44%.
And we approve the county general.
Most of the members saying we approve to the county general is presented. Any questions? I'm sorry, Commissioner, county. Any questions? If not, on the floor say aye.
Aye.
Close down. Motion Security get some amendments.
We have a few amendments. I'm just trying to book some money around from accounts. No, no demon, uh, just to say having something to do at the end of the year. If you have any questions about that, I'll be glad to try and answer them. That's all we need. No demon.
No good words.
Most of the members saying we approve to the county general amendments is presented. Any questions? If not, on the floor say aye.
Aye.
Close down. Motion Security. Is that it?
We have one solid waste.
Okay, go ahead.
We just happened to have one solid waste amendment signed, like, just book the money around, no demon.
Most of the members saying we approve to the solid waste amendment. Any questions? If not, on the floor say aye.
Aye.
Close down. Motion Security get an amendment.
We have one solid waste. We just happened to have one solid waste amendment signed, like, just book the money around, no demon. We have any questions about that? I'll be glad to try and answer them. That's all we need. No demon.
No good words.
Most of the members saying we approve to the county general amendments is presented. Any questions? If not, on the floor say aye.
Aye.
Close down. Motion Security. Is that it?
We have one solid waste.
Okay, go ahead.
We just happened to have one solid waste amendment signed, like, just book the money around, no demon. We have any questions about that?
Most of the members saying we approve to the solid waste amendment. Any questions? If not, on the floor say aye.
Aye.
Close down. Motion Security. Is that it?
We have one solid waste.
Okay, go ahead.
We just happened to have one solid waste amendment signed, like, just book the money around, no demon.
Most of the members saying we approve to the solid waste amendment. Any questions? If not, on the floor say aye.
Aye.
Close down. Motion Security.
I have a question. I was out there the other day, and I was looking over where you built the canopy open for the seed truck done, and put in that, but those tanks, this, how's that working out? Is it good and what you wanted it to do?
Yeah, it's working okay. We don't collect all the rainwater. I mean, we should, but, uh, by now, the T-Dex is good with it, so it's working okay. So far, we haven't had a hollow off on that, and that's one of the next ones. It's a shame we had to spend a hundred thousand dollars to take off a hundred dollars worth of lead chain, but they would obviously run now, so. Yeah, I was up here the other day, and I looked over where the scene, and I was just wondering how it worked out. Yeah, I have not looked at it, but jumped over the night, my truck went into the side of it, so I kind of forgot my truck going to the rear. But it is.
Black, bro.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to truck, I don't know how to do it, so I just looked at it.
Okay. Any other questions?
I said, Mike.
Library report.
She's like, she's like, she's like, she's like. 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 So far, we haven't had a hollow off on that, and that's one of the next ones. It's a shame we had to spend a hundred thousand dollars to take off a hundred dollars worth of lead chain, but they would obviously run now, so. Yeah, I was up here the other day, and I looked over where the scene, and I was just wondering how it worked out. Yeah, I have not looked at it, but jumped over the night, my truck went into the side of it, so I kind of forgot my truck going to the rear. But it is.
Black, bro.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to truck, I don't know how to do it, so I just looked at it.
Okay. Any other questions? We do have a motion and a second. This being your last spiritual call button.
Johnny Garner. Jerry Love.
Yes.
Larry Blacktop.
Yes.
Alvin Kenneth.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Flight.
Yes.
Buddy Richardson.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malera.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
Perry Bell.
Yes.
John Wells.
Yes.
Mike Allen.
Yes.
Seven and four.
Okay. So we'll get that taken care of tomorrow, okay? Next is, uh, insurance for voting machines. Ms. Kathy, you want to tap on that?
Yeah. Share a little information with everybody. Uh, thank y'all for giving us an opportunity, uh, to come tonight and tell you about some of the things that's going on in our election office. Um, right now, what we are in need of is we are in need of voting equipment. Um, and I know that that's never going to be a popular thing, but it is something that we're, we're at a point where we haven't had that. And so just wanted to share with you where we're at in that process. Um, we have been, over several months now, talking with a number of vendors. We've had, we've done in-house demonstrations with four vendors and have been very aggressively negotiating with them. And we are at a point where we would like to proceed with doing a request for bid if that is, um, okay with this group. Now, um, the reason being, I've had a lot of people ask me, why do we need voting equipment? Well, it's actually, we're in a political necessity. The voting equipment that we have is 12 years old, and the average life expectancy of voting equipment is 10. So as you can tell, we are already kind of pushing the envelope for that. In fact, in every election we had in 2016, we experienced some kind of failures. And so we, luckily, we had spares, we were able to shelter things around, but we're just at a point where we, there's not enough duct tape. You know, we're gonna have to have new voting equipment. Um, the second reason that we are in need of voting equipment is because I'm sure you've all heard about the concerns of election integrity. And everyone is, is worried and wanting to make sure we can, can validate all of our results. And so where we're going with that is having an article paper trail. Our current system does not allow that. Um, as you've all voted, you know you vote, you never have anything in paper. And so, um, while that is not being mandated right now in Tennessee, there is federal legislation that's in committee about it, and 38 states have now adopted some form of voting equipment that allows for a paper trail. So we're being proactive. We're, we need the equipment, and this is something that we can address now so that we don't have to come back to you later and say, we need more equipment because now we need a paper trail. And then, of course, finally, if any of y'all voted in the presidential preference primary last year and voted for those delegates, you know it was really fun. You got to, it was like your old rotary phones, and, um, you dial, and you dial, and you dial. And so that, as you know, just like none of us have rotary phones, that technology is outdated. And so everything that we're looking at now that's in the marketplace is touchscreen, so it'll create a much more efficient and positive voter experience. And so that's the reason why we are coming to you at this point, asking for your blessing of proceeding with the new voting request for bid.
I think, too, Kathy, right now, a stable payout's coming $20,000 on this bill.
Yes, the financing on this, it, there's, it's, it's really gonna end up being a minimal cost to the county, although the bids that we're looking at have been somewhere, and these are just budgetary quotes, we have not seen bids yet, uh, and we're still talking about that, but they're anywhere from 200,000 to 300,000 dollars. Now, that sounds like a lot of money, but, um, the Help America Vote Act, the HABA Act, which actually provided some of the funding for the equipment we have now, Tennessee was smart enough that they saved some of their money back. And so we have available to us $10,000 per precinct, so we have $120,000 that we can get reimbursed to the state. Now, the county has to pay for it, then we fill up the grant money, and it gets reimbursed, 120,000. Also, because we have known that this is coming, this isn't a surprise to anyone, we have been able to stockpile, so to speak, our reimbursements. If we have a federal election, we get some reimbursement from federal government. If we do a city election, we get reimbursement from the city. Instead of putting that back into our general fund, what we have done is earmarked that for future voting equipment. So we've got about $62,000 in that account right now, or in that designated, that's what I did. It's designated for this. So we have a little over $180,000 to apply to whatever it is that we purchase. So, um, and, and some of our vendors have even offered us some financing options, so I think that you're gonna see a very, very small, um, part of our accounting to do this.
I'm gonna measure my stood here for about, did you say three to 350?
200 to 300.
I thought it was two to 250, but I thought you said three to 350.
We have had one that, as we've got numbers, that it's, it's higher, it's, uh...
What are you realistic?
Uh, between two and two feet.
We've got, y'all got about 100.
100, a little over 180.
Our morning class is permission to be...
Our morning rest, because the reason we need to take action is tonight, of course, if we waited until March, that's not gonna have, get us time to go through the full process, and we would like to have the equipment in place on office election.
That was a big, big question, but if you would have it in place by the office election...
That is, that is our intention, that is our need.
What, what about the equipment we got a couple of years ago, would it be compatible with the new machines?
Yes, um, actually, the equipment that we got us up to vote on, and it was, is the electronic poll packs, the telephone, remember it, this is in our registration, and it's starting to streamline things. At least two of the vendors that we have talked to are compatible with that, and it's
Does that go to election worker or just election commission?
Election commission.
And the administrator?
An administrator.
I make a motion to approve the second.
Motion made second, we'll approve the purchase, purchase, purchasing insurance for election commission for twenty-five hundred dollars. But this will be new money, you got a roll call.
Would we be classed in audit?
Do what?
Where we're at right now. Would we be classed in audit for the election commission?
Would we be classed audited?
That's state and county.
I guess you could.
But I'm sure where we're at with the form of them.
Y'all know where we are with all the steps.
Uh, we've received a bit of that back, uh, we're still looking for some. Just cover us before we lost it.
There.
Any other delegates?
Uh, I haven't looked to see exactly how much we have left. We've got a meeting tomorrow and I told you the agenda, we got a meeting last week and we got canceled because of the weather. Uh, but. I think we're looking at a couple of computer hard drives, a couple of items like that if we haven't been able to count them.
Do y'all meet with other election commissions or, you know, statewide thing?
Yes, the Tennessee Association of County Election Officials, and we meet annually in the summer, and they also have regional meetings on quarterly basis.
What I'm getting at is I'd like to have, what do you, what do other counties, he said he's talking to three, so what do most of the counties, if you meet with one of them?
I can speak to most, but I know that that's how we can wear off, is that others are doing even more.
Does that say something on that job?
Yeah, I just want to let it concern us too, where you're at.
Let's get them beat tomorrow and the next meeting, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll back on that, that be okay?
Yeah, we'll be late.
Will that be okay, Joe?
Yeah.
Mr. Malero, I'm sorry. Any other questions? We do have a motion in a second. This being your last spiritual call up.
Johnny Garner. Jerry Love.
Yes.
Larry Blackson.
Yes.
Al McKenna.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Richardson.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malera.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
John Wells.
Yes.
Mike Allen.
Yes.
Is that everything?
Okay, so we'll get that taken care of tomorrow then, okay? Next is, uh, issue of new voting machines. Ms. Kathy, you want to tap a lap?
Yeah. Share a little information with everybody. Uh, thank y'all for giving us an opportunity, uh, to come tonight and tell you about something that's going on in our election office. Uh, right now, what we are in need of is we are in need of voting equipment. Um, and I know that that's never gonna be a popular thing, but it is something that we're, we're at a point where we have to have that. And so just wanted to share with you where we're at in that process. Uh, we have been over several months now, uh, talking with a number of vendors. We've had, we've done, uh, in-house demonstrations with four vendors and been very aggressively negotiating with them. And we are at a point where we would like to proceed with doing a request for bid, if that is, um, okay with this group. Now, uh, the reason being, I've had a lot of people ask me, why don't we need new voting equipment? Well, it's actually where the confidence in S E. The voting equipment that we have is twelve years old. And the average loss on a second seat of voting equipment is ten. So as you can tell, we are already kind of pushing the envelope for that. In fact, in every election we had in two thousand sixteen, we experienced a pandemic failure. And so we, luckily, we had spares, we were able to shelter things around, but we're just at a point where we, there's not enough duct tape. You know, we're gonna have to have new voting equipment. Um, the second reason that we are in need of voting equipment is because I'm sure you've all heard about the concerns of election integrity. And everyone is, is worried and wanting to make sure we can, can validate all of our results. And so where we're going with that is having an audible paper trail. Our current system does not allow that. Um, and as you've all voted, you know, you vote, you never have anything in paper. And so, um, while that is not being mandated right now in Tennessee, there is federal legislation that's in committee about it, and thirty-eight states have now adopted some form of voting equipment that allows for a paper trail. So we're being proactive, we're, we're, we need the equipment, and this is something that we can address now so that we don't have to come back to you later and say, we need more equipment because now we need a paper trail. And then of course finally, any of y'all voted in the presidential conference primary last year and voted for those delegates, you know it was really fun. You got to, it was like your old rotary phones at home, you dial and you dial and you dial. And so that, as you know, just like none of us have rotary phones at home, that technology is outdated. And so everything that we're looking at now that's in the marketplace is touchscreen, so it'll create a much more efficient and positive voter experience. And so that's the reason why we are coming to this point, asking for your blessing of submitting a new request for bid.
I think too, Kathy, right now a stable pay is probably twenty thousand dollars on this bill.
Yes, the financing on this, it, there's, it's, it's really gonna end up being a minimal cost to the county, uh, although the bids that we're looking at have been somewhere, and these are just budgetary quotes, we did not send bids yet, uh, and we're still talking about that, but they're anywhere from two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars. Now that sounds like a lot of money, but, um, the Health America Vote Act, the HAVA Act, which actually provided some of the money for the equipment we have now, uh, Tennessee was smart enough that they saved some of their money back. And so we have available to us ten thousand dollars per precinct, so we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we can get reimbursed to the state, not counting we have to pay for it, then we fill out the grant money and it gets reimbursed, a hundred and twenty thousand. Also, because we have known that this is coming, this isn't a surprise to anyone, um, we have been able to stockpile, so to speak, our reimbursements. If we have a, a federal election, we get some reimbursement from federal government. If we do a city election, we get reimbursement from the city. Instead of putting that back into our general fund, what we have done is earmarked that for future voting equipment. So we've got about sixty-two thousand dollars in that account right now, or in that designated, that's what I did, it's designated for this. So we have a little over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to apply to whatever it is that we purchased, so, um, and, and some of our vendors have even offered us some financing options, so I think that there's gonna be a very, very small, um, burden on the county to do this.
I'm gonna measure my stood here for about, did you say three to three fifty?
Two hundred to three.
I thought it was two to two fifty, but I thought you said three to three fifty.
We have had one that, as we've got numbers, that it's, it's higher, it's, um...
What are you realistic?
Uh, between two and two.
We've got, y'all got about a hundred.
A hundred, a little over a hundred.
Our, our warning class is permission to be.
Our warning risk, because the reason we need to take action is tonight, of course, if we waited until March, that's not gonna have, get us time to go through the full process, and we would like to have the equipment in place on office election.
Now, we should go to big line of questions again. If you would have it in place by the office election?
That is, that is our intention, that is our need.
What, what about the equipment we got a couple of years ago, would it be compatible with the new machines?
Yes, um, actually, the equipment that we got was not to vote on, but it was, is the electronic poll packs, the general, remember it had assistance in our registration, it is sort of a screen like that. At least two of the vendors that we have talked to are compatible with that, and it's gonna make it even easier. There is a barcode that we print out on that, and so instead of having someone standing there and punching buttons, things like that, it's gonna be a matter of scan and go. So you will see people going through those elections much quicker, and in fact, in some cases, it's gonna allow us to utilize a smaller number of machines than what we have right now.
So will all precincts will have a new machine?
Yes, this would be throughout, all precincts and all the other.
What will happen to their own machines?
Um, at least two of the vendors have offered us a trade-in allowance, if you will, so that they will take that and discount the price.
Uh, how much do you think the worst-case scenario that the county would have to pay?
I really can't say because of course, again, we've got the bids that have got to come in, um, but the highest bid we've had, or I can say bid, it's not a bid, it's a budgetary quote, so it's not in stone yet for what they will submit. It's been, uh, about three hundred and nine thousand.
Okay, and what, how much do you think we would have to pay? Now you say the states, but we'd have to pay all that upfront, about you, or?
You would have to pay, uh, no, no, not necessarily. Again, we have different, with different vendors, there are different finance options, including one, for instance, that said we could, we could break it out over a three-year period and no interest. Uh, and those are the kind of things that we're negotiating, because we have been very effective with all the vendors that we needed to be as cost-effective as possible. We cannot, we don't have money to spend, so, you know, we wanna make sure that we're getting the biggest bang for our love of this, and we're gonna continue to make that clear up until the time that, you know, we are, are still bid.
When I know any lead you bid, so I make a motion giving permission to bid, sorry.
Motion made.
Yes, sir.
Trade-in allowance, can you say, yeah, that's approximately, how much of that you give for that?
Well, it's been very interesting to see, uh, because it's been anywhere from ten thousand to seventy-five thousand. Again, it's a little different. It is drastic difference, so if you're in the car, we may, it's, it may be much simpler, but, but we, uh, that, and that's all, we will see all of that on the business that we're requesting, all that's detailed out, and then of course, bring it forward.
You just, you just focus my attention. If y'all don't approve of the money, they can accept the bid. We don't bid again until, um, uh, March, so that's gonna sort it down, uh, six, eight weeks more.
And we probably would not be able to get the equipment in the office.
We have nothing.
And do you have enough special coffee?
So you're asking us to, to trust your judgment? Is that what you're asking?
No.
Sure.
I don't think we have special coffee.
Okay.
As long as we get our money, we can put it whatever we want.
But I gotta trust, I gotta trust, I'm gonna be real lucky.
Like, that's why you want, really wanna make sure we have good voting equipment for the election, everybody in there has a best plan.
We'll be on the ballot, we'll be gonna get some passes.
Hold it a second, do what I can, babe. If we give the purchasing committee the authority to buy it, then it'll bid.
If, if the rest mission has problem, then I will bid my motion, just.
Up to a certain figure, it just, we can't figure out what it's gonna be, though. I bet you don't think you thought the bid might come there right today.
We have a vendor that has submitted a budgetary quote in that, in that number of bids.
If that's the case, you're looking for twenty thousand dollars to come in too.
Yeah, so this, this figure here, like, six thousand for three years don't add up with what?
One sixty thousand dollars for three years and sixty thousand dollars for all three hours together.
Okay, that'd be about twenty thousand. I, I would rescind my original motion, make a new motion, give you the authority to bid and have the purchasing committee authorize the purchase.
All right, now we have a second on that, Mark, I don't know if you understand, who's taking that first motion? We rescind that second. All right, now I have a motion in a second. To give the, uh, let them go ahead and bid and give the purchasing committee the power to go ahead and buy, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Does everybody understand the motion? This will be new money, so we have a roll call up on this. Is there less than, is there any more questions?
Sorry. Johnny Garner. Jerry Love. Larry Blackson. Al McKenna.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yes.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore.
Yes.
Russell Blake. Buddy Richardson.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malera.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
John Wells.
Yes.
Mike Allen.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir, I asked you something. Go ahead and advertise the bid and we'll look at it. Thank you, Captain Kathy, good job. The next is, uh, a resolution, the Megaside people, they asked us to pass a resolution, asking our county, uh, our state representatives to fund, to finish funding the money for the Megaside up in, uh, in Haywood County. And, uh, everybody, I think we're the last ones to get it, but we met last, but, uh...
Michael Paul, we have a resolution. They're not approving the resolution.
It's to ask, to ask the, uh, state legislature to finish funding the Megaside.
They're not asking for anybody.
They're not asking, they're not asking for us, just a resolution, asking them to do it. We're gonna do the resolution, it's all right with y'all.
We're gonna take a word anyway.
Yeah. You will second on that? Are there any questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, no, no motion here. The next, I got something to come on, or any other business? Uh, Commissioner Vale has a resolution here that, uh, has to do with the, uh, safety and health program plan. It's got a change, the same it has been for years, but they got one change in it, we just changed, you mean this one, a change in it right there?
Yes, it's, there is some slight changes that's made for the modern, that's the real change.
Okay. The change in the safety director shall, in the eventuality that there is fatality or an accident resulting in hospitalization of three or more employees, ensure that the commissioner of labor and workforce development receive notification of the occurrence within eight hours. All, all work-related, inpatient, hospitalization, amputations, and losses, and I must be reported to TOSHA within two weeks of water. And the rest of it, like I had. This is a resolution we need to get through.
I make a motion for it.
Stand by.
Motion made, second, we'll give approval to the resolution, is there any questions? If not, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, no. There's one other thing that I've hesitated about bringing up, we'll hand bring it up tonight. Commissioner Butler and myself met with the people from, uh, West Tennessee Healthcare like we co- last Thursday. West Tennessee Healthcare has taken over them, uh, business in McNairy County. They're charging them zero to do that. They've all said the same thing. Now, we're, right now, we're paying a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to have their ambulance service down here. The reason, the reason why they're doing this, they're trying to network everything, so if, if Chesapeake County ambulance is out, one from McNairy can come up, one from Jackson can come down, or whatever. This worked, worked real, uh, real well last Thursday, my son was working, ambulances in McNairy County. All three Chesapeake County ambulances were out. They were sending one from McNairy County to Finger Hill for standby. On the way up, they got a call on Highway two twenty-five, OB patient needed ambulance, so they didn't stop at, uh, Finger Hill, they just wound it to two twenty-five. The same afternoon, there was one coming back, the McNairy County ambulance was coming back from Jackson. They got a most attention, they got a call that there was a, a heart patient on, uh, Roy Davis Road that needed that ambulance, so they just turned around and sent, sent that one right back up there. So the response stand will be a whole lot better, the coverage will be a whole lot better. The only thing they ask us to do is build a new building somewhere on the west side of town for ambulance, and they're gonna keep the one on the east side for ambulance. Now, Jackie, if I tell this right so far. It's gonna cross it around, Espen on, on building, the building will be around two hundred thousand dollars. We either, we're looking at either out here, where you're wearing your forty-five, going to bypass, go west, forty-five will flap, and forty-five will no. The city has offered a lot up there by the, um, fire department. They also offered one yesterday, or went back, and obviously he would try to offer us one, he would just have to look through the, the, uh, board office in the city. There's one out behind across from Street from, uh, our, like, out there by the, uh, doctor's offices out there. Or there's something else, of course, we'll have to actually tell that right now, something else will go out there too, but anyway. So we've got three places to look at. Save about a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars a year, them, the shit will pay for itself in one year, or a little over one year. They do all the upkeep on it, they do all the insurance on it and everything. And that's something I was gonna talk to y'all about approving tonight, but I'm still not through the negotiation deal, I guess is what I'm gonna say.
Also, walk the power.
And they won't buy our three ambulances also.
So we won't, we won't have any?
We won't buy any, well, I'm saying that's ninety-five dollar, ninety-five thousand dollar every, every other year.
I would retain ownership of that building, huh?
We would. Of course, they, they own the building out east, they're not, but we'll have, have those children. And this also, there was one question asked about this, it's a ten-year contract also out like that. If it was two, two or three years, I'd say no, because they become any tactic, we're gonna pull out, unless it's a ten-year contract, at least if so.
He's talking about this networking, I know Claire and I have kind of run around a little bit more, I think it was three Thursdays ago, there was seven emergency nine-one-one calls, dispatching events in forty-five, it was a cloud. You were motion on that bill tonight?
No.
We got to negotiate.
We could go ahead and afford the building, I don't know about now, I'll lay. Cause I'm, like I say, if I've got a little more power to, a little more twist, maybe I twist a bit harder than we did that day.
Well, ten years you're saving, the county's saving about two million dollars.
Good acting, ten years.
I mean, county ambulances, so it's a... What's the cause to it?
Say what?
I said, what's the cause to it?
Say nothing. I don't see any.
I don't think, when I said we don't need to be saving.
Well, we're not gonna miss it, just go ahead and, yeah, I like on, on, on any ambulance that I think, where I get off on the building. Right now, I'm trying to get paid half the bill, a hundred thousand dollars. Just be honest with you, so we're gonna, we're gonna twist it for all it's worth. But, uh, that's where we're all at, so it, it's, I don't see any drawbacks to it at all, because the coverage is gonna be better. The response stand will be better. We'll be, there will be three ambulances here, I'll have, and, and they'd have a big fore, like it is when I write that.
I think we should, we're getting ready to place it, but I think we should really think about response time, you know, just like the chief.
Right.
That's gonna be a long time, I think, uh, I think, uh, we, I'd say five thousand dollars on fly.
Well, we won't be saving any money wherever we go.
Well, I don't know, just, I could be a rather try to save five thousand dollars, put it somewhere out here, only if it doesn't matter, we can make it much better, I don't know if they're right here is the best, but I'd consider response time, replacing that building over, for short-term savings.
Well...
Not about long-term or response time.
There's no statement there because the city will talk to us the, the other man anyway.
What's it, even if those parts aren't good?
Yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying, yeah, I see what you're saying. Any more questions on that? All right, then, well, I got one other thing. Uh, our next meeting is scheduled for March, this is twelfth. I'm gonna be in Nashville at the county double date on, on, on twelve thirteen. It'll be all right if we back at the end up to the fifth, probably double, the double, uh, go forward, of course, anything else, I can do. Is that all right, y'all? Boy, I was making a motion to look into the field.
Make a motion to move to the field.
I hear a second. You got that for Stacy?
I'm excited.
Any questions? If not, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, no, motion taken. Also, I gave y'all tonight's training, we've been working on our building code and our tiny house code, and all this kind of stuff, listen. And, uh, Rick Phillips has come up with this to add to our property maintenance code. Give you a caveat about, I'm gonna drop this today, but I'm gonna act on it tonight, I'll tell them to go over. And if you got any questions between now and next meeting, give me a call on it, or we'll get with Marty if we need to, or whatever needs to be done on this. So y'all should be sure to look this stuff over real good. Let's see, I guess that's all. You want to, I'm interested, anything you'd like to say, or if I got?
I do.
All right, well...
Mr. Speaker, very good.
Thank you.
Uh, we have four little boys, Chesapeake County High School, that won, uh, first place in Nashville, I mean, the Beta Club convention, with this robot that's there, uh, and, uh, they make some money. They'll be glad to break it down in the demonstration.
They need, how much money do they need, Jerry?
It's gonna be a bunch, how much you think, Sean? Cause they've got an opportunity to go to Savannah, Georgia, to the Nashville. Sometimes it's, um...
There hasn't been a dollar set on it, the, the, uh, Beta Club sponsor asked for an opportunity to, to revisit with fundraiser, which granted the last board meeting, but I, I know that the board will contribute, but I don't know, there's not been a dollar amount stated yet.
We usually give the party graduation five hundred dollars a year.
What?
We usually give a party graduation five hundred dollars a year. Look at my board.
Yeah.
Y'all, y'all gonna give them five hundred dollars?
Sure.
Motion made, second, we give them five hundred dollars, any questions on this? This goes to the Beta Club, all right?
If we'll go to the Beta Club, and specifically to those who are gonna be competing in the robotics competition.
Okay. Is there any question? This being, you may want to do a call, roll call up.
Johnny Garner. Jerry Love.
Yes.
Larry Blackson. Al McKenna.
Yes.
Jackie Butler.
Yeah.
Tim Pro.
Yes.
Ann Moore. Russell Blake.
Yes.
Buddy Richardson.
Yes.
Jerry Emerson.
Yes.
Sandra Hyer.
Yes.
Joseph Malera.
Yes.
Barry Smith.
Yes.
Diane Jordan.
Yes.
Chris Simmons.
Yes.
Terry Bell.
Yes.
John Wells.
Yes.
Mike Allen.
Yes.
Well, can you add to about everything else I've talked about?
Stacy, will you please include that in your plan?
Plan, yes.
Thank you.
I, I just wanna say, thank you all, make sure you tell all the county workers during the past, snow and ice, the work that they've done, I know Troy made right decisions each day in Catholic school. Uh, I, I heard a group of teachers, my wife and mayor made up in the brig later, talking about shooting out the tires from the truck. Appreciate you, and, and the trigger, I'm firsthand, I got to miss out on all the snow, I found out real quick that, you're almost fifteen, you take a tumble in the ice, it takes a while with people, so I appreciate the guys that were out there working and doing what they're doing, and I appreciate you.
T I as well. I can tell you, Chesapeake County T I, beat them by a...
The guy that was taking me to the emergency room, we got the mask in Canada, we entered the third world.
All right, anyone else? If not here, motion with your, oh, oh, you got, oh, I forgot, turn it, this, all right. Ready, get out of here.
Yes, sir, we have several. First one is Sheila Jane Cubble, Carolyn Yvonne Beecham, Connie Austin, Judy Daniel, Robin Galu, Ellie Richardson, Angela K Audrey, Jan B Cox, Amanda L Gregory, Kim J Phelps, and that's it.
Okay.